And welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey everyone, really glad to hear it today.
As well as Colin and Julie joining us here today. Welcome you guys. Good to see you.
Hello.
How you doing everyone?
So today we are going to be talking about organization. So how you can stay organized in your Get Oiling system with your digital systems, your funnels, how you take care of your new customers and just kind of knowing where everything is at once. As you start out on your journey of incorporating digital tools like ours into the way that you work, it can be a little tricky. Uh, once you created something to remember, well, what was that called? And where is it? And how do I go find it? And what's it connected to? And so on. Uh, it is a bit of a learning curve. So I want to share with you today some tips that are going to help you if you're just getting started and some things that you can start incorporating if you are well on your way uh with um with your system. Just to help you keep things nice and tidy uh and make it easy for you to get things done and find things when you need them. So uh, welcome. Let us know where in the world you're coming in from. We're always excited to hear from you. We're live here every Thursday at two, at one, excuse me, noon US Eastern time. Uh, we're going to go ahead and pop out a video. I've got some slides prepared for you today and we are going to get into some um. We're going to get into some actual demonstration of things and we do have someone signed up for a live work review. So uh, we're got a lot to get into today and we're really looking forward to sharing all of this information with you. So again, don't be shy, head over into the chat. Uh, we are certainly excited to see you here as always. All right, uh, let me make sure I've got everything out here. Um, and then I will get into. I guess it just decided to hide that field from me. So every time I open Zoom, it does something new. All right. All right, welcome. We're live and uh, and we do this every week and we hope that you will come and join us if you're watching this as a replay in the future. So uh, today we're talking about how to stay organized with Get Oiling. We're going to talk about system tools. So things that are built into the Get Oiling system. We're going to talk about some new ways of operating that you might start adopting. And I'm going to show you how you can create some very easy and simple visual workflows with a free tool that you are probably already using. So what we'll talk about today are of course, how to stay organized as you grow with Get Oiling. We will share some tips and built-in tools in the Get Oiling system for organizational purposes. And then we'll get into how to create and utilize visual workflows for your funnels and your website. And as always, we'll have live help and Q and A. So if you have questions here today, go ahead and add those to the Q and A here on Zoom. And of course, we look forward to working with you. We have absolute whiz kids Colin and Julie here and the man who built this platform himself Greg. In the Q and A, they can help you. And if it's something that you would like for my feedback on, you could specify that. Or of course, the team would leave that for me if it's something that we might need to talk or walk through. So go ahead and add those. And if you'd like to join us on a call like this one and get your questions answered live, this is free and open to all of Team Young Living. Of course, we'd love for you to come and get your own Get Oiling system and start reaping the benefits of working smarter. Uh, but you can come here, you can ask questions. We talk about all kinds of topics that help you grow your young living business every single week. You can get on this list to learn about our upcoming topics and get an invitation to join our next live call. And if you would like to work together live as one person has signed up to do today on this call, you can go to getoiling.com/websitereview to see, to save your spot for an upcoming call. Now, if you are looking for someone to just do some of this stuff for you, you can go to getoiling.com/concierge to reach out to our team, learn more about them, and of course, request a quote. All right, so let me know in the chat, do your digital systems need a little spring cleaning? On a scale of um, of one to, oh my God, how messy are your digital systems? Are you able to find things that you're looking for? Do you know where things are when you need them? No shame regardless of where you are in this process. This is a learning process for all of us, right? Uh, so today we're going to talk about how we can get that spring cleaning done. And of course, for those of you who are just getting started, just getting your feet wet with this, you'll learn how to keep things nice and organized from the get-go. All right, so staying organized in Get Oiling is going to basically entail a couple of things. First, we want to establish naming conventions. Basically, that means that we have a system by which we name things in our system. Right? We want to have a name for something and that's the same name that we will use or will use a variation of that name for everything else that's related to it. We'll also utilize a cool tool in your Get Oiling system called collections. And we will get into creating and using visual workflows. So this is something that we will be doing outside of the Get Oiling system, uh, but we will be utilizing Canva for this. Uh, if you have been around Get Oiling for any length of time, you know that Canva is an integration that we have. You do have to have your own Canva account. Uh, but if you are creating designs in Canva, for instance, we have an easy button to move those designs straight into your Get Oiling account. And we're going to be utilizing the whiteboards feature in Canva. And again, you can be a free Canva user to utilize this feature. There's no cost to you. Uh, and and we'll learn how we can use our whiteboards in Canva to establish visual workflows and you'll see how really cool it is to pull that all together into one um visual model. All right, so let's talk about naming conventions. We want to establish and maintain naming conventions for everything that we create in our Get Oiling system. So in Get Oiling, you can create loads of things, right? Of all different kinds. They can be pages, they could be landing pages, campaigns, follow-up plans, automations, vaults, classes, all kinds of stuff, right? It really matters what we call these things so that we are able to easily identify what they are in the future, right? And to be able to logically connect them to the next things that we create to establish a full system, right? So we want to make sure that we are naming our resources as we create them according to their use and their association. By association, I mean what other features or functions in the Get Oiling system are going to be attached to them. So as an example, you could name your funnel, right? Uh, or name the, you know, an asset for its purpose or its type of asset. So let's just say, for instance, you have a three habits to boost productivity and that is a guide that you've created. It's a PDF. So you're going to call that the three habits guide and then your landing page for it is going to be called the three habits landing page. The campaign attached to that is going to be called the three habits campaign and so on. We're going to name it. So that's the three habits funnel, right? And then you would of course, give it its additional name. So if you're using a page for this, uh, and and the page is one where you're collecting leads, you're going to call it three habits landing page. And you're going to use that same key word that you establish here for all of the linked or associated resources. So again, that'd be your three habits landing page, three habits initial nurture campaign, because that is its purpose, right? That's what it's doing. It's for the three habits funnel. It is an initial nurture campaign, right? Um, and and of course, the name campaign and then our three habits confirmation page. You could also, let's say you have a call booking funnel, you'll call it call funnel landing page, call funnel campaign, call funnel booking page, right? So establish consistent naming conventions for these things that you create on your site. And remember that there are internal and external names to everything that you create. So what I'm referring to throughout this call are your internal names and that's usually going to be called name. So in the case here for the page, the name of the page is are you crunchy landing page? Now what they see is are you crunchy in the title bar text or are you crunchy in the link path, right? So I know that if I type in, are you crunchy, everything that I use in this lead generating funnel is going to show up, right? So are you crunchy landing page campaign, are you crunchy? This is an email-based campaign. I'm specifying that because maybe I have a text version, right? So are you crunchy email campaign, right? This is a campaign. But if they go to manage their preferences, their communication preferences from you, they're going to see the actual name that we're advertising this guide as, which is three ways being crunchy can change your life, right? Just like you're calling it the three habits guide internally, you're calling it externally, three habits to blah, 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 right? So what we are talking about here today, just to remove any confusion, is we are only talking about our internal naming systems, right? You're going to use your keywords and your clever copy and your marketing mind to do the external stuff and that's for another call. All right, this is our internal today. Now, we also have a really cool feature in Get Oiling uh called collections. And this is going to make your life so much easier, especially if you are someone who utilizes resources from our content partners. Oh, you don't? Please head over to the content tab on the Get Oiling site and learn about all of the incredible people that are creating things that you don't have to write yourself, you don't have to create yourself and they're gorgeous and they're well-written and they are ready to plug into your account to do all kinds of amazing things. Now, if you are someone who has already been doing this, then you know that your campaigns in particular can easily blow up in a list uh from, you know, 10 to 200, right? And now you've got all of these campaigns and you've got to figure out where it is, what it is, right? If I, if I want to use that thing, well, what was that called? Where did that come from, et cetera? Please make sure you're utilizing the collections feature, right? So every time, and this would be a workflow that I would suggest that you follow, every time you claim a resource from a content partner, add that resource to a collection. So just like you decide on a naming convention for a funnel, you're going to decide on a naming convention for your campaigns, for instance. So you might have a set of campaigns that are related specifically to onboarding new customers. Maybe you have another set of campaigns that are specifically educating on product or that are seasonally oriented or that are nurture campaigns that you'll use in your lead generating funnels. So you can, again, you can decide to set up your naming conventions for your collections based on the provider that you get them from or based on their use, like those examples that I just provided. And then highly recommend as well that you consider going in and renaming resources from your claimed bundles to fit the naming conventions that you've established, right? Whether that be the names of pages that you inherit from others or the names of campaigns uh that you uh that you claim, et cetera, right? So as of right now, collections are a feature that's available in campaigns uh as well as in other types of content like videos. Uh, but definitely make sure that you are also applying this workflow logic to uh every time you claim a resource bundle, ask yourself, does this fit my naming convention? How can I rename it so that it fits in better so that I'm able to more easily discover it when I need it later on? Now, here's an example of how you might go about naming or renaming resources. So these are new customer resources. You have just signed up a new young living customer. Congratulations. So you may have a new customer automation that bundles a bunch of different actions. You're going to name that surprise new customer, right? That automation is going to be called new customer. It's going to make it super logical for you. And you're just going to bundle all of the new customer stuff into it so that you can apply that to your contact manually or you can attach it to a landing page or something like that if you wish. So you'll have the customer tag, right? So your new customer automation would apply the customer tag. Maybe it'll also add them to your customer vault if that's something that you have. Maybe you have a new customer welcome campaign. Remember here, new customer is our naming convention, right? Now, um, you would also maybe, I hope you do, have a follow-up plan for your new customers. In this case, you might name this new customer follow-up plan and you could maybe also create a page on your site where your new customers can opt into uh email versus text for you uh and maybe specify how frequently they'd like to hear from you, et cetera, right? And so you might have a page on your website that you will call new customer contact preferences form, right? So what if you have a lead generating funnel? You have at the core of that, the thing that you're offering, your lead magnet. So you have three habits to boost your energy. It's a PDF. It's in your system. In your files manager, it's named three habits to boost your energy. Then you have your three habits landing page, right? So you have a page that you set up and you name it three habits landing page. This is where they get offered that free thing. It will tag them with the tag three habits. So you can find everyone associated with that funnel. You will also have a campaign, of course, attached to this landing page that's going to deliver emails. You're going to name that internally, three habits initial nurture campaign. And then you may also choose, unless you're using, of course, a, you know, just a generic confirmation page, which is totally fine. You can just call it confirmation page and only use that. Uh, or you may have a more specific confirmation page for this funnel, in which case you're going to call it three habits confirmation page. I feel like this is where a lot of us um kind of diverge where uh where where we start to uh to to get things uh to to miss the mark, basically. Uh, because we will have some kind of a clever name for our PDF, our lead magnet, our thing that we're ultimately doing, giving away, selling, et cetera. And then we don't name our resources in accordance with that specifically. So come up with a simple name that you'll use for every single thing that you create that's related to that thing, right? So in this case, the core of this, this is a funnel that is based around the carrot we're dangling, the lead magnet that is called three habits to boost energy. So everything else that's associated in this funnel that I create is now going to be called three habits. And now when I go to my system and I search three habits, I can easily see everything that's related to it. Or if I've been going about creating these different resources and I know that I want to connect on my landing page, the campaign and the confirmation page, all I have to do, because I know I'm working on the three habits funnel, is search uh in the dropdown. When I go to select my page, three habits or the campaign again in the dropdown, search three habits. Now, another great tip here is to actually catalog the systems you create with visual models. How many of you here, maybe show, show your hands, are visual learners? Are you someone that really needs to see something to fully get it in order for you to really kind of understand, okay, this is how this works? This is how this connects. You need to see a visual model. Well, good news for you. That's me too. And we have absolutely got a way to get this done and we're going to do that with Canva uh using their whiteboard feature. Now for funnels, you're going to want to use a linear, simple flow chart model. And if you're not familiar with this, don't worry. I'll show you. They actually have templates made for you. So you'd never have to create this stuff from scratch. And if we are talking about your website, so maybe the pages on your website, uh, maybe the naming conventions for the pages on your website are a little confusing. Uh, we will get into what that looks like here as well. In this case, for your website or mapping your website, we're going to use an organizational or hierarchical flow chart model. Again, this is something that you can find in Canva very easily and use their existing resources to create. And I'll actually show you how to do that here right now. And then we'll get into our live help and Q and A, including our request for uh live help that we have today. So let me see if I can pop over here to. There we go. I am in Canva already. Okay, perfect. So what we're going to do here, uh, first, let me show you in Canva. All I did was uh logged into the dashboard of Canva here. And then you can go to the whiteboard feature right here. When you click this, it'll take you to a new untitled design uh in your whiteboard. Now I'm going to actually go over here and show you, I think I just typed in the word flowchart, which is great. Uh, and you type in the word flowchart and you can see lots of really good examples here. We're going to use a very simple linear one. We don't need to branch out in a bajillion different directions. It really is going to be uh quite simple. Um, and so I'm going to actually grab, I think, I think I'm going to use this one. This is a very simple one. Um, there we go. It actually populates everything here for you quite a bit more than you actually need. Um, but what you can do here is actually utilize this uh to your liking. So let me hide this menu a little bit here and just kind of zoom in a bit. So I'm going to play around with this by first deleting some of these things that I know that I don't need. Most of these are tips. And here's what I'm going to do. I'm just going to delete those guys. I'm going to move this here. And you can actually see that it automatically has this um this arrow here. So from here, I can start creating, right? So the first step here, so let's just say, we'll, we'll use for an example, um, this will be our funnel, right? So we want to um, we want to flowchart the process from the point at which someone becomes a new lead all the way through to when someone uh is um, is is maybe moved over to a call with you, right? And I actually have an example of this that I've pulled up recently. So let me, let me just go grab a flow that I've created here. Here we go. Yeah, this is lead magnet to appointment, right? And so what I did was I created first here, the first thing that happens. And it, you may benefit from uh maybe just writing all of these things down in a list, right? We're doing something very linear here. Um, because once one thing happens, then the next thing happens and the next thing happens and so on. Now, the first uh sort of linear list that you would create is from the um, from the initiation point, which in this case, a lead opts into a landing page, which they may be discovered on your social media or on a blog post of yours or, you know, on a podcast episode, et cetera. And and then a series of events happens and our ultimate outcome, which is ultimately what I want you to list out before we get into this, ultimate outcome is that person hops onto a call with you, right? Because that is your point of conversion. Someone is going to get into your system. They're going to be exposed to your expertise because you're giving away something for free uh that they're interested in. And then you're going to be giving continued calls to action for them to hit reply. Or uh, if we're going a little bit more advanced here, uh, to actually go over to a booking page on your site and hop on a call with you for maybe a consult, right? Where that person could then be exposed to ideas, maybe even products, uh, and you can set them up with a new Young Living account, right? So the first thing that happens is, is our lead opts in on a landing page. Now, um, what I'm doing here is I'm creating a visual difference between what the lead sees and what's happening in the background. All right, so this is the page and there's a really cool thing that you can do here. Let me actually go over to uh our Get Oiling account. And um, and I will show you, uh, let me find my um. I'm going to type in the word crunchy because this is actually a, an example that I was providing you guys. So here we go. This is are you crunchy landing page? I'm going to view this. And I'm going to copy this URL. Now check this out. When I come back over to my whiteboard here and I hit paste, Ctrl V. This is something that we can actually, and I don't know why this isn't working the way that I'm supposed to. Um, you can actually take this link and pop it straight in to uh one of these, right? So if I want to be clear on what that resource is, I can put that in right here, right? Another thing that you could do uh is you could, if you want to make this look nicer, is you could even hyperlink this image. And that's, you could go link right here and I'm going to paste that. And then this is now linked, right? So we can actually go straight there. Another thing that you may choose to do, if you want to um easily go and edit a page uh in your system, you want to know where it is specifically, you could also grab the link here from the editor, right? So this is the editor page and the name of this is called are you crunchy landing page? So what I'll do here is I'll type in are you crunchy landing page? And that's the name of it in the system, right? And what happens here? The lead is tagged and what is the lead tagged with? If we go to our leads and what a lead does or what happens after a lead registers, we're tagging them with newsletter and um, and then we're going to call this uh are you crunchy? Cause that is the tag that we're using here. So I'm going to come back over here and I'll write in my tags, right? And then we can go and specify what campaign is applied. So what campaign is it? It's this one right here, through ways being crunchy can change your life. I'm going to go like, I will edit the campaign and I'm going to grab the link to it right here. And I can pop it, oops, right into here, right? Uh, and so we'll call this um, the are you crunchy campaign? And I will again, link this shortcut, uh shortcut here, uh commander, control K is how you enter a link. The other way that you could do this is to select this and then head over here and uh, and you could actually find the different functions uh if you expand the menu. So command K or control K is going to give you the option to link this. I paste that in and now I can actually go straight to that resource, right? Then they're going to a confirmation page. Again, once that's created, then we are able to add that. So here's the confirmation page. If we click edit from here, we can actually retrieve that internal link and head back over here to type that in, right? So this is the confirmation page. And I'm going to paste in that internal link. So I can always go straight to it. Now let's expand this flowchart just a bit. So someone opts in on a landing page. We want to be able to quickly say, all right, where are they going? What does that person see? There it is, right? You could also again, link internally to the page uh in your system. The next thing that happens is the lead is tagged with newsletter and are you crunchy? That's fine. You could find that in the settings for this page. The are you crunchy campaign is applied. Do I want to edit that campaign? I can click here and go edit it. And then it goes to a confirmation page. And again, do I want to see it? Do I want to edit it? I can click here and I can go and modify that page, right? Now strategically speaking, when we are talking about taking someone from the point of opting in on your website, all the way through to saying yes to a call with you, we are going to, in our email campaign, and you can see it's still the same color, the gray is what they don't see, right? This is a first message. This is going to link to the um, to the lead magnet. And so this is going to be. This is going to be in the system and it's actually in this case for this funnel, it's on a page. And that is this one, three ways being crunchy can change your life. So I'm going to come over here and you can see this is actually like an article that's on a page on the site. So I'm going to grab the internal link here because again, it's going to be more um useful for you to be able to uh go straight to the um, the resource in your system. Again, here we can go to more, we can go to link or command K, we can paste in that internal page, right? Day one campaign is going to, in our subsequent messages, are going to link to a call to action for someone to book a call with you, right? So in this case, maybe you have an apply for a call page, right? So let me go see if I actually have a page like that. And you can see that in this system, we don't have uh those smart naming conventions applied here. Here we go. This is a strategy call landing page. There we go. I'm going to copy that internal link. And this would be the external link. This is what it's linking to, right? So your campaign is going to be sending them to this page. But if I want to edit it easily, this is going to be, and what did I name this page? Strategy call landing page. So maybe everything in this strategy call funnel is going to be called strategy call, right? So this will be strategy call landing page. And I'm going to again, add the link there. And here again, we're going to we're going to specify wherever we are linking to something in our campaign, we're going to link it in our flowchart here. So once this person uh signs up for a call with us, right? They're going to, let me move this here. They're going to reach a page and I'm going to copy this one and I'm going to edit this link so that I don't have a link here anymore. Cause I just want to reuse this resource. Okay, there we go. So those are connected now. So now they're going to go to the strategy call landing page. And this is actually where we go off in a new direction, right? So if someone, and this may be a little complicated, if you don't have systems like this set up for yourself yet, but this is how you can really start to manage what that complicated system might look like. So when they click here, they are then going to land over here on this page where there's a form, right? They're going to fill out this form and then they're going to They're going to fill out this form and then they're going to receive a campaign. And so I'm going to copy this feature here, Command C or Control C. I'm going to paste that. And again, I'm going to remove the link here. I'm going to attach this to this. So now it moves if you move it. And this is the apply for, or so I'm going to call it Strategy Call Campaign, right? And again, you would go into this, this page, go into your settings, head over to this section here. And the campaign that you're going to have here is the one that you're going to go hit Edit, copy the address and attach. Now, I don't have that set up on this particular account, but whatever the campaign is that you send them, you're going to want to do that. Another thing that you'll do here as well, just to get this completed is we would send them to your your book a call page. Right? And again, you would link this one as well. And then once somebody goes through this process, they have a call with you, then there are other systems that you may design like this that you apply to them as well. But this then gives you a visual model of exactly how your funnel works, where they go at each step. And and then of course, how you can go and modify that resource if you need to, whenever you need to. So you can always know where these things go. So what I always recommend here is at the end of an initial nurture campaign, after our final message, we want to apply an automation. So automation, add to general mailing list. And then I would go and grab that automation that I have in my system. I'm not sure that I have one in here. So we can go over here and maybe I have an add to general mailing list attached here. So let me see. I don't. So what I'll do here is I'll go ahead and add one real quick. And this would be add to general mailing list. And that's just going to apply a tag. And this is where you would put newsletter or mailing list or whatever your tag is. We'll add that automation and then even this automation, this internal link right here, copy this. Add that to your chart. Right? Link that here so that you can easily go and find this whenever you need to. And so this is what we would call this is our lead flow from Lead Magnet to Appointment. This is our Are You Crunchy Funnel? Now you can actually visually see what your funnel looks like. Right? Now let's take another look at how you might go about creating a flow chart. But this time it will be a little bit more simple and it's going to pertain specifically to how you organize your website. So this is in Canva, Sean. Yes. So let me go back and show you. If you go home in Canva from your dashboard in Canva and you go to Whiteboard right here, that's where you want to go. And from Whiteboard, you can look at templates. And I'm going to actually type in a hierarchy chart and see which one I like best for this. This organizational chart is perfect. So we'll use it. There we go. And again, they all come with lots of of little like resources for you where you have, you know, sticky notes and different steps, etc. So you can actually set these up and modify them so that you can use them ongoing. This is especially going to be useful to you if you have an assistant that works with you. Or if you, you know, basically if you're not the only person who manages your site. So we're going to call this a website map. And this is our homepage. Pretty cool. Then you can specify what your second level is. So the first level of your website is your homepage. The second level of your website would be main pages that come off from your homepage. So this might include an About Me. Another one might include your funnel landing page. Another might include a an About Young Living page. This page I'm going to, the second level, I'm going to keep these the same color. And I'm going to go ahead and just delete these guys. As well as this. So you can just delete the things that you don't need. Just to make again, things just a little bit cleaner and easier. All right. So our website map, I'm going to copy this. Attach it over here and then drag it to this guy. And then we can select these and kind of move them around, right? And you can start to see that we have oops. Just want that. There we go. So I'm going to move all of these down to the same level together. So we can say here's our our funnel landing page. Here's our About Young Living page. And all you have to do is just attach so that they highlight to each other. There we go. So you've got your top level pages. These are typically going to be the things that you are linking to directly from your homepage or the things that are in your menu, for example. So you'll have an About Me page. You'll have a, again, a landing page to your funnel. You'll have an About Young Living page, most likely. You may also have a, what are some other main pages on your website? What would your blog be second level? So Beth, that's a great question. Technically, yeah, I believe it would be, but it's not necessarily something that you need to map here because it's not a page that you're creating on your site. That's actually a function of the Get Oiling system and it has that in place for you already. So if you want to, if you know that you're going to include that in like a menu, you could use this to kind of represent your menu. But essentially what you're doing here is is really just kind of determining what the the hierarchy of pages is. So let's just say here, I'll create another one here. What's another page? Somebody, resources, services. Okay, how about a Work With Me page? Perfect. All right. So this would be a Work With Me. Excellent. So from here, we could say under an About Me page, you may have, and we'll create a third level color here. Let me see what other colors do we, I'm just going to get rid of this stuff. I don't want this. I'm just going to keep this nice and clean. We are going to, excuse me. We're going to change this color, maybe to this green one. So that's our third level. So under our About Me page, we're going to have, they're going to have an opportunity maybe to to book a call or contact. We'll call, we're going to call this our call funnel landing page. Right? And then again, I'm just going to copy this guy, paste him, connect him at the bottom, connect him to here. And if you wanted, you can actually turn these into arrows. Do you see that? You can actually choose the arrows on either side. You can also choose whether or not they're elbow curved, etc. But really, this is, this is for your own, your own purposes. All right. So Sean, the reason why you would set something like this up is if you're having trouble with kind of seeing in your mind's eye where everything goes on your website. It is really important for the experience of users of your website for them to have a clear and logical flow of where they go, right? So if they land here, where will they ultimately land if they continue browsing, for instance? So you know, here, for example, if they land on the funnel landing page, we know that they are going to go to the they're going to go to the confirmation page. So this is going to be a funnel confirmation page. But maybe if you're, maybe if this page here has a confirmation page, but you're also offering a video, the next level here. And that's going to be a different color altogether because it's not on the same level. This is going to be, if maybe your lead magnet is a video, this is going to be the lead magnet delivery page, right? For your About Young Living page, you may have several pages that you branch off to where you talk about different product lines, right? In in which case, let me create some space here. In which case you would have maybe several pages. Here where you're going to maybe offer the the reset page. And maybe here there's a another page that's about oils 101. Right? And if they go to the oils 101 page, maybe that's a landing page and maybe it has another page that it goes to. So basically what we're doing is we're creating a visual model of what is what and where on our website. Maybe under Work With Me, people have two or three different options, right? So maybe under Work With Me, you have maybe you have AFT or you know, maybe you also have wellness scans. Right? So this is a page about AFT and then it's a page about wellness scans. Then underneath that you would have a page to book AFT, right? So this is the AFT or confirmation page. Do you see where I'm going with this? This is, this is what you want to do. You want to basically determine what the linear flow is. So basically if someone landed on page A, what is page B for them? Now granted, you do have a menu on your website and people could always choose to go to the menu and try to navigate to a different place to get information that they're looking for. But if your goal on a website is to squeeze a visitor's attention down to a specific focus point so that they take an action, which is the most effective thing to do with a website, then you want to go in with a clear plan, right? So that's the purpose of creating a resource like this for yourself. Because once you have this mapped out, how you want it to go, how you want it to flow, you can actually do exactly as we did in the previous example and go and link these pages directly here, right? So you can actually go into your pages in in your Get Oiling account. And you can go over here to, and I'm going to search for home. And here it is. I'm going to copy this link here from the View button. And I'm going to paste that over here and see if it's a website. Look at that. I just hit paste inside of Canva. This is our homepage. I'm going to link that right up here. And now that becomes the space from which everything flows. So if I go to the homepage and I'll just go back over here to the dashboard, if these are actually website pages, this is such a cool thing in Canva. You can actually just paste the website URL if you have a website page and you can pop it right in here and that can be the thing that you're linking to. So instead of having these colored things, right? You could actually just have your page here because when you click it, it takes them right over again here to the homepage, which is pretty cool. So here's our About page. So I'm going to copy this link. I'm going to head back over here to my whiteboard. I'm going to paste just anywhere on the board, paste. And it actually populates. And I can stick that right over here and use that instead of the color if you wish to do that. Now, the other option, of course, that you have is just to go here and attach a link, right? So that you can click straight off to it. Right? So you can actually create something that's clickable here so that you can go and find what you're looking for. So I would recommend if you have ever felt like your website maybe isn't super easy to navigate or you feel like you're you're not providing the level of user experience that you really want to, that you consider kind of mapping out what you want this to look like so that you can actually go and create it and then you can easily go back and see what's what. And and of course, make those modifications whenever you need to. So if, for example, maybe you know that something changed on a particular page on your site and you don't maybe specifically remember where you had linked to it previously. If you're creating charts like this as a function of the work that you do, right? So don't just create a thing, create the thing, then document your system, which is what we're doing here. Then you'll always be able to easily go and find the thing that you're looking for. And if you're going in and you're naming each of these, the exact name that you're using internally for your pages inside of your account, you can of course easily see what's what. But then if you're linking to it, you could also easily go and edit it and make those modifications wherever you need. So I hope that that is super helpful to you guys. And and maybe not too intimidating. I I find that for me personally, and I don't know if this is maybe true for you guys too. But when I am learning something new, the sooner I can get it into a visual model where I can spatially orient the the sort of concepts of what I've learned, what I'm learning with the other things that they're related to, the easier it is for me to kind of see how it all fits together in my mind. And I don't necessarily need something like this moving forward, but it is a really important thing to have if you want to be clear on how you're documenting your systems, how they work. And especially if you ever plan to outsource anything to someone else, maybe you want an assistant, someone to help run things with you. Having something like this is going to be absolutely critical for you to to be able to easily communicate what is what, what goes where, what is the use, the purpose, and of course, the name of the thing in your system. Okay, the keyboard shortcuts to grab items, Lynn. Great question. We actually have a tech tips episode that I highly recommend that you check out in the Success Academy. Let me go verify because there's actually a there's a PDF that is correlated with that. And and I think that that would be really useful to you because it's just a quick thing that you can reference whenever you want. Let me see. Yep, I found it. So what you're going to want to do, let me get back to my screen share here and I'll show you. So I went into the Success Academy under Live Trainings and typed in Tech Tips and hit Search. And it's going to be the first one that you see there. And in fact, if we click and we open it up, you will find a download right here. And you'll actually see that all of those keyboard shortcuts are at the top. So I'm going to go ahead and paste this into our chat for you or into the answers here for you. But definitely have a look at that training at some point. That's a lot of, lot of interesting resources in there that might be new to you. All right. Yes, Kathy, if you are looking for one-on-one help, I would definitely go to our concierge or another thing that you can do if you go over. It's not necessarily dedicated, complete one-on-one, but it is a much smaller group, more intimate setting right here in the Success Academy. Get help from a real person. That real person is Pam, who's an absolute whiz with our system. You can go over here to this group help call and pick a time to attend. And these again, are small group. You may wind up being the only person on on that particular call. So but but it is usually a pretty small group. So I highly recommend that. But if you want to make sure that you have just dedicated, I want only one person working with me, then you can go to our concierge page and and you can request a quote for that. And that's absolutely something our team can do. Suzie says, how can I find how all the automations are linked? I have landing pages and have and campaigns. I know I need automations, but I don't know which I need for what. So it's kind of kind of depend on the function. So automations allow you to do just a little bit more than you can do on like a given landing page or page. So let's just say, for instance, on a page, you have a form, you're offering your lead magnet. And there you can just very easily set up the the campaign that you need to send. But maybe there's a reason that you would want to remove a campaign that they may already be receiving if they opt in to get this thing. That would be an instance where you want to utilize an automation. Or maybe you're taking payments on a page and it's for two different types of things, right? And so you want to deliver a different experience to someone based on the option that they chose. That again, would be a use case for automations. So so I definitely recommend one of our trainings on automations or even our, like our help article on automations is really, really helpful. But if if I can help you with more specific questions for your use case, feel free to follow up with more questions here. And I'm happy to get into like more of the specifics that might be more helpful to you if that doesn't answer your question. Please do let me know. And I'm happy to get into like more of the specifics that might be more helpful to you if that doesn't answer your question. Please do let me know. Okay, let me see. Thank you so much for your patience, Jennifer. If you're here, please raise your hand. I'd love to bring you out to chat with you uh and see how we can help you with your site. Let me see. Here we go. Hi, how can we help today?
Um I wanted you to take a look at my about me page. I'm still not sure that I have. Done everything in your training that you offered uh a month or so ago. I I watched it and. I still just feel like I'm not sure it's exactly the way it's supposed to be, or if there's still more tips and tricks you could share.
Yeah, of course. Let's go take a look. I love this. This is really cool. Okay, so the about page. Alright. Oh, this is a blog post.
I did do it as a blog post, yes.
Oh, okay. I mean, I think that this is great as a blog post. Yeah.
I was wondering, like, my call to action at the bottom there um. Ultimately to collect their information would be the simple start to gluten-free, because that will give them the PDF and I'll collect their information. But is it good practice to also link one of my blog posts for additional information, like the nine tips to gluten-free kitchen? Or should it just be more mainstream, like here's your one option to do?
Yeah, so because this is a blog post, it fundamentally is going to have loads of different links on the page. So it's not really possible to like funnel um attention in the same way. So if you're wanting to maybe utilize, if somebody's curious enough about you to wanna go to. Uh a dedicated page to learn about you, I would actually argue that it might be a better use case. Um and and again, there's nothing wrong with having a blog post about you, but I think that having a page on your website that is about you. Is going to be a bit more effective because you can have a pop-up, right? And you can also clear everything out and just make sure that the only link that they see there is that, right? Uh or the only links that they see are the ones that kind of move them uh sort of down that hierarchical level, down the funnel further, right? At a blog level, they're sort of at a, they they have an opportunity to just peruse widely and that's sort of the mindset. And there's, you know, loads of, here's all these different links here.
Distracted.
Right? And even here, like if we click here to about Jennifer, it's just gonna take us back to that same page, right? So um so yeah, I I I would actually say that there's a solid case here to just have a page on your website. Um that's about you and and that maybe more effectively funnels them toward what those next steps are. Because you're gonna more effectively, I think, um. Close them as a lead, right? You're you're more actually, you're more likely to capture a lead off of a squeeze page. Uh than off of a call to action on a blog post, because it's just blogs are just naturally crowded. And distracted.
Okay. Okay, so um I'll I'll change that to a page then. Alright, no problem.
Yeah. Excellent work, though. I love like the the formatting is good, like the storytelling is good. It's not too long. Um. Yeah, I I mean, it it delivers. Uh what I think, um I mean, it your goal here really is is to build uh like a a blog reader audience. That's kind of like the the main, the main thing for you. I'm sorry.
Um can you say, I'm sorry, I had something beeping in the background.
Oh, sorry.
As you were talking, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so um I can tell like with the focus on content on your site, like that it seems like a primary uh goal. For for the stuff that you're creating is is just growing your list for your blog. Is is that right? Am I getting my read on that?
Yes, yeah. Well, growing my list, I do a lot of recipes that are infused with essential oils. So when they click on many of my recipes. It's going to have something about essential oils. Not everyone, but like that one's not going to. Um see, make one few. So this one, I think, was no, yeah, like that one right there, the pumpkin.
Okay.
Right there. Mm-hmm. Like that one has the essential oils in it. And if you have suggestions as to. If I need to put it more forward-facing with them on the bottom of blog post, I usually have something about. Why use oils? So I have that link will will take you to the oils that I use.
Excellent. That's a wish list.
So back to young living.
Yeah.
Yes.
Fantastic. Yeah.
Yeah. And then when you go. And then when you go further down, I have something about um using the oils, like not all oils are great or something like that. It should be on that. Oh, okay. Yeah, it was right down there. And then you can click to see why. I still think I need to work on that section. Um.
I would, I would actually do something to really draw the eye to this. Like I I would maybe like bold it, different color. Just something, yeah, something like that, uh just to really draw the attention right here to to this chunk of text. Yeah, and then we're taking them over to, okay, awesome.
Yeah.
Well, this, this is, it's very good. It's good. There may be.
The size is wrong. The font size hasn't been fixed on the.
Oh, yeah. But but like the way you formatted it. Yeah, the 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 way you formatted it, that was very good. You're doing a good job. Uh so um. When you have someone review this information, you're wanting them to head over and enroll. Okay. Um this would be another instance where I would, I I would, I would encourage you to use a page for this. Because you're gonna be able to to draw them into the story more. Uh because what I would do on a page like this is to go well above and beyond, just talking about how you were impressed, the seed to seal. How they're produced, et cetera. But even like create something that behaves even a little bit more like a sales page. Where you address some of the objections that might come up. Or um you know, tell them more about what they get when they sign up with you specifically and things like that. And you you can, again, really capture and keep that attention more effectively on a page than you can on a blog post. So this would be another example of something I would encourage you to put uh onto uh onto a page for sure.
And are we able to add additional pages to our account without going up to the next level? Or do we have to go to the next level?
That is a good question. Greg?
Hi. Yeah, uh you can. Or um. Some options for you to add on more.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, fabulous. Awesome. Thank you for sharing and really great work. Awesome, awesome. Let me see if we had any more questions before we get going. Uh Jennifer is doing such an amazing job with all those recipes on the blog. Um alright, Kathy says, uh if you email someone a new campaign, once that's done, would an automation guide them to the next? Like if they started with oils one oh one and then you want to send them something about thieves or ninja. I guess I'm trying to figure out how to keep them engaged after the initial campaign. So yeah, one hundred percent. You can uh use an automation and attach it to the last message of a campaign. And have that send or initiate a new campaign. So just like the one that I was mentioning earlier. Uh the add to general mailing list after an initial nurture campaign for leads, um that just simply applies a tag, right? But in this case, if you're wanting to keep them on a drip of information, uh then then yeah, you could have, you know, you start them on this one. And then it takes them to the next one. Here's, here's one thing that I would encourage you to consider, though. If this is about keeping them engaged, then it's not just about making sure that something is always sending to them. It's ensuring that they aren't just opening, because that's, that's a hurdle enough, is that you're sending something and they they need to open it. Uh but that we want them to open it and click something. So what I would actually encourage you to do is to attach your automations to the end of that campaign. So maybe the last two messages in your campaign, you can, you can share several links. What do you want to learn next? And then you can have an automation link that they can choose, where they can learn more about this thing or that thing or the other. And they can select the campaign that they want. And then you could just have that be the message that you include, maybe create a saved reply for this. And put this in like as a call to action in the final messages of those educational campaigns you're sending to customers. Give them the choice. Right? Because what you don't wanna do is have a, I'm gonna send them ninja, but then I'm gonna choose that, you know, seedlings comes next. And then you've got somebody who starts getting seedling stuff and it's not relevant to them and then they unsubscribe from you, right? So I would actually encourage you to uh to to give them the choice and just have the call to action be, what do you wanna learn next? Pick one and then have an automation for each of those options that maybe removes them from the current campaign. Maybe it tags them if you want. In this case, these are your customers. We're just keeping them educated, but I would then just apply uh the next campaign. Good question. Okay. Anything else? I think, I think that was it. You guys have been all over it. Excellent. Well, thank you, guys. What do you wanna learn next? Let us know. Uh head over into our Facebook group. Uh hit us up, support at get oiling dot com. Let us know what you wanna learn how to do. Uh and of course, uh we will be back here same time next week. Have a great week, everybody.